I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the... Under the new business, we're gonna move the proclamation down to the bottom. Oh, she's working on that. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
I make motion to adopt the amended agenda and to adopt the consent agenda.
Would you favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay. Let's move on down to public comment. Systems may address counsel on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Out of respect for the counsel and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comments?
I think that's busy.
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm Marty Landa. I have a lot on the north end of T Street and I'd like to hook City Water up to it. I have a document here that I signed and send the 50 fee would be $25. The question must be approved by the town council and then I am to pay for the rest of expenses. I have a contractor and I have a plumber and I would like to buy, get a meter from the city if I could.
You know where it's at?
Well, yeah, I do. I'll tell you a little bit more about the situation. It's outside of the city limits, it's in the county, but there is a water line there, so it does qualify to have water hooked up. And Mr. Landa came in and filled out an application which included all the system development charges and the normal fees that we charge for that. And he thought that since he was outside of the city limits that he should not be held to the same, should pay all those fees, you know. It comes out about $2,500 and he wanted me to explain to him exactly what it was all for, which a lot of it is for the meter, the meter resetter, all the fittings and whatnot to hook it up. And then there's also system development charges that I think he didn't feel like he should have to pay because it's not in the city. But, you know, the system development charges really qualifying for everybody because we still have to maintain the tanks, we still have to rebuild wells, we still have to do all the normal maintenance stuff. So, what he's up against is, he's wondering, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is why he's paying the same amount as somebody that's inside the city limits pays of that same $2,500 and then we come out and put in the meter and run the line from the main to his property and sign up and then just...
See, you have no labor. The city would have no labor at all. I have the contractor plus the plumber that I have to pay on top of the city fees.
And I believe that the reason that the fee for that work has stayed the same is because we also don't collect any taxes off of his property outside of the city limits.
Now, wait a minute. The county, uh, the city should not get any county tax there, because he... If our county don't know what he's taxing.
But, now, doesn't the city normally do the work as far as hooking up?
Not outside the city limits.
Not outside the city limits. So he's gotta have his own contractor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna have that much or more.
And we've never, never reduced the fees when somebody, you know, and it comes up quite often, somebody that does qualify to have water because there's a water line either across the street or on their side of the street. But always in the past, that's, that's been the way it's been. People pay the same fees out of the city limits that they do in. We provide all the equipment to do so, but he has to hire a contractor to put it in. And that's the way it's written in our ordinance also.
And I, you know, I co-test that, I don't think that's right. And then on the contract that we made up like, we didn't realize, I didn't really realize I was in the county and Jeff came out and we discussed it. And I'm not fighting with Jeff at all. We're trying to get something solved here. And then he says, "I don't think you're in the county." I said, "I mean, in the city." I said, "I'm not, I'm not." I border the city, but I'm not in the city. And so then that's how we ended up here because I have stuff in here that doesn't tell me what I'm paying for and why I'm paying for it. I have water charges twice. I have sewer charges twice. And I can show this to you. And then you're also getting paid, I pay you every month for what water I use and, you know, whatever services that I get, I pay. I have a monthly feed to the water. Now, that should handle the fees that he's talking about that you deserve, which I will pay. But under that, I don't, there's a lot of this, these fees that I don't think pertain.
The way our ordinance are written right now, if that's the way it is, and I think it's still fair to charge the same amount. You know, the reason it's a bit cheaper in, it's not really a bit cheaper in town, but they get the labor done in town is because we do collect the taxes off of the properties that are in town. So they, you know, we get money for the general fund and...
You're getting money to read the meter, Jeff? And to take care of it.
It doesn't, even though...
You're not sharing with me for my contractor fees and my plumber fees?
Nope.
And I'm buying what I can from you, the meters and the parts.
There's nothing that says that we have to extend that privilege to people to hook up the water in the county, but, you know, we want to. And that's just the way that it's been found in the past that it's the fair and just way to do it. So that, I mean, that's the way it's written right now. We don't, we don't have any choice in the matter. We can't change that for your situation and I don't think we would anyway. We'd be setting a precedent, but...
Yeah, well, I think that it would be your benefit more people you can hook up. Now, all that is gonna be county now and there's more lots everywhere I'm at and I'm thinking about buying more of them, but, I mean, that's beside the point. But any lots that you could hook up, I would think would help the city water situation. And then I don't mind paying anything that you can show me that I owe. That on here, there's things that I will show the council that I don't believe is legal. And if it is, it is, and if it isn't, it isn't. I mean, I'll pay what I have. I feel that it's a privilege to be up, that you will let me hook up your water. Don't get me wrong, Jeff.
Sure.
And I will pay what I have to pay, but I wanna know what I'm paying for.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was unsure at the time and we got a meeting recently with an attorney. We're, we're gonna restructure how those system development charges are figured and stuff, but for right now, I mean, that's, that's the way it comes out is the way the application is written and... And I don't know, I don't know exactly what the system development money is being, I know that was one of your questions, "Well, what are you gonna use this money for?" I guess it's the money to maintain the tanks and, you know, we're constantly spending money for coring gas and all that.
Well, I would think if you're operating in a lot, you would raise a, in other words, I... We realize you're spending money. I realize I'm spending money. I mean, you do what you gotta do to make it work.
Sure.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
Counsel, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are if he would present some kind of package like that he has, that we will need to look at and we'll review it all and then make a decision on it.
As it is right now, our ordinance is pretty much the law. So we don't, we would really have to change the ordinance.
But your ordinance does not pertain to me in a county.
Sure does.
Yes, it does.
It is very clearly outlined in there.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't realize.
It's outlined for people that live in your situation, right.
I can get that together and share it with you too. But that's, that's the way it's written and it is very clear.
I know, you told me that, yeah. And, but I still don't understand this contract that I signed. And I did everything, I signed saying that I will go into the county, city. Can't recall the word when you...
Oh, annex.
Well, I will annex in the city. And that doesn't seem real right to me. Now, it should be written, "I will annex in the city and my rest, my neighbors will annex into the city."
Right.
I can't be the only one annexing into the city, you know. But if the rest, but it's not written that way. And I went ahead and signed it because I went through my best to annex into the city or whatever.
We've never annexed one single property. You know, it would be the entire neighborhood if we got annexed on it.
Well, I mean, that's easy to say now, but who knows?
Sure, sure.
Well, and what you signed was just a consent that, it doesn't mean you're actually annexing in. It just means that you're consenting, basically considerably thinking about it. So when they go to annex in, if there's enough people in that area in a certain amount of range or a certain amount of homes that you can all annex in.
We may choose to never do that because we have some of those consents to annexes that have been out for 20 years, you know, the entire time I've worked here, where we've never chosen to annex.
What if I want to annex it?
It's not really your choice.
Oh.
We have to...
Well, nothing, my choice is... You know, I'm gonna have a pile of money just to get stinkin' city water over there. I washed my hands of the hospital and then I didn't hurt your gang as bad as today would.
But...
What do you wanna think about that?
Well, another thing I wanna think about, I don't wanna drill a well right there and then have a sewer right there. I went through this situation before.
Yeah. You legally could drill a well, but you couldn't put on a onsite sewer to dispose of it because you don't have that choice either if it's available to use the sewer system. Sewer system, yeah. They would never give you a permit. But you could drill a well for sure.
But I've won. I don't say my well would be any better than the... I know what the situation was.
My water would be cheaper than drilling a well. My water will be cheaper than...
Exactly. I agree, yeah. I've drilled a few wells in my... So you set a package. What kind of a package would you like me to present?
Would you like to just leave his example of what he filled out and then you guys can review it?
Now, that way we're not blind with what...
No, right, that's...
If you wanna leave that, then we can review it and we'd have to make a decision at another meeting on that.
Well, I'll be keeping it for you so you can keep yours. I can run a copy for you if you'd like.
Oh, that'd be good. This is the one I'm concerned about. Yeah. This was the annex paper and telling me that I could pay $25 fees. Sign up, you don't want more fees on there. I want less fees on there. I'm gonna have more fees. I would like to turn screw to you, but I can't. Oh, here, I got it right here. I got the same thing.
Sure, sure. You got the same, you got the same.
Right, yeah. And who do I present? This, you, this attorney, Mary. Now, what I was saying about Dublin that I was worried about, see, they charged me for water here and they charged me for sewer here. Then they come down here, they charged me for water again, they charged me for sewer again. Then they charged me for parks and this other, but they did take that off. They tried to do that for me. The dry away and that type of stuff they took off. But that was the problem I was having with that cost and that cost and this cost and that cost. It just seemed like there was, it wasn't explanatory.
Can I hold on to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll get, we'll get it back.
I just give you what that's due.
Oh, and he's got one and he's got one.
Okay. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah.
See ya.
Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
You too. About oh?
About oh.
He's such a cute old guy.
There you have it.
You're funny.
Okay. We'll get some copies made of this so everybody can see it.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I haven't even looked at the statute that we have. I don't know what it says. We have to take Jeff's...
Well...
It's very clear that he pays all the fees.
Just don't make us a copy of that ordinance and you can look and see what it says.
So he's gonna do it about $2,500?
It's, it's, that ordinance has been in effect a number of years.
A number of years, you know, and just the parts alone to hook up a sewer and a water arm, you know, over a thousand. So there's a cost for it that you have to structure.
15.
Sure, you know, I mean, it's not just... And then we have to maintain...
And just say, "I'll pay the $2,500 for that to go."
Yeah.
Right?
All right, let's move on down to department reports. Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor. So we had a great year last year. Of course, we got a lot of grants, but most specifically we got our 15 million to the water. So as I'm looking over the goals that you had assigned for me to do, I am probably 80% done with all of them. We have selected a, with the water treatment in mind, we have selected a firm to move forward with. We're in contract with no one yet. We're still kind of negotiating. And I have a call with that situation tomorrow. But we have, within that water treatment facility, we're gonna update our master plan. We're gonna look at all sorts of other different things that are needing to be done under that, our goal number one. The goal number two, we are going to be looking, we did look at all the professional services contracts and we've made some changes there. We're also looking at our franchise agreement for contracts and we're needing to change pricing on that because they just haven't been increasing at all. And then I'm still working on the dog ordinance. We did a townwide cleanup in June. It went really well. We'll do it again this year. I think we'll probably put more bins out and have it for a longer length of time. I talked with the school superintendent, Mr. Carter, and they're putting together a work program at the school and I have said I would like to participate with them and take a kid and train him and have him work through our park system so that there's an instant reward of seeing what a job well done can produce. So that will go along with the beautification of parks. I'm also going to have the splash pad installed and ready to go by the time school gets out. So we'll have a whole season of splash pad. And I'm having the engineer who's putting that together do our different phases for McDonald Park because I think it could use some beautification down there. And I'll be writing a grant to get some more money so we can have something nice and put some pathways in there so that our seniors and our community down there can have a little place to go and watch the kids and play and splash pad and all that. And then goal six, we are, we'll be closer to that. We have the 3D printed houses coming. I posted an article that city manager Nick Green was interviewed on and that's moving forward. We're working with the state planning commission to make sure that we meet planning guidelines because it's a new application in technological technology. We're also updating our planning codes to, because we need to, but we're also gonna put that in there so that it won't, you know, not get held up through planning stages for the 3D printed. Goal seven, I'm working on that. And then I filled the city planner position and Warner Creek just kind of corrected itself. Although I have been asked by Regional Solutions to write up a small two-page outlook of what I feel that could happen out there in the event that the new incoming governor doesn't fund the facility out there. So I would like to have it be one of those places that we can really effectively take completely 100% off the grid and to show that we can do that throughout the town of Lakeview with a little bit of planning and understanding and engineering and getting some people to think bigger. I have asked Representative Owens to help with some of the money that he has going into the short session to help with the North Water Extension and to help with putting smart meters through after town of Lakeview. And I'm meeting with Commissioner Schulenberger and the county's attorney, our attorney, and myself and Darryl Anderson to start to work on the memo of understanding between the town and the county so that that North Water Extension can move forward. And I met with a BLM representative and Commissioner Schulenberger to talk about the broadband that's coming from Harvey and Lake, where we'll pick it up at Lake County border and bring it all the way down to the California border. There has been some concern about the area by...
Abert Lake.
Abert Lake. That there are a lot of indigenous archaeological sites there and that those cannot be disturbed and then we need to get, you know, the tribes involved who are in, involved with that. Our solution is that we will either go, stay with the ODOT right-of-way through that area or we'll go up and hook to the telephone poles and go around it that way. Well, then we'll just stay with the right-of-way.
You don't have to stay in the right-of-way because you have an AC on one side and a little bit of study area on the other.
So there's not... Okay. I have called, I have called Nikki to say we're gonna need to put some more money.
But I think if you stay in the right-of-way, I don't think there'll be a problem issue because there's an old road that, and the right-of-way is pretty wide too. There's actually an old road that they widened and straightened somehow, so.
There was some concern coming from BLM that that road is built on rock. So if we do walk into an archaeological site, it would be very difficult to go under and even more difficult to go around. So we're aware of it. I've contacted the engineering firm, Ann Nick Green, to say we're gonna need to have more money as a contingency in case we run into something like that. But we're well aware of that.
Isn't there side we're going into, questioning, yep?
There is, yes. It's, it's up and running. Yeah.
I just wondered if we could go down the home back road and come that way instead of...
Zayo is currently going down that and the purpose of us coming down 395 was to create redundancy.
Right, but I'm just thinking, so you're going along Abert if you did along the home back road going into the, or into flush and then bring it down that way.
It's already in and...
Just, just think that would get a route, there's problems.
Yeah, somebody already owns that line. I don't know.
Well, no, I'm just looking at the other way.
Under, I think, yeah. We'll definitely, we'll get back to this though by the county, the Landes, I think. So we're, we're planning for A and then B and then C. And I was really glad that Barry called me and introduced me to the BLM gentleman because I hadn't met him before. One, because it, it was really great to be educated about potential problems and B, it indicates to me that there is a bridge that is being built of relationship between the county and the town. So I'm really happy about that. And I, I think that's about all of the update that we have for last year. We were really busy and we're gonna get more busy, busier for this year. I've got all of the staff up and running and willing to move forward and we're gonna get some, a lot of stuff done. I'm hoping that once we get engineering going, which to do the drawings to, this first phase for the water treatment pad will be 11 months because they gotta do three months of testing and data collection. But I'm hoping that we can select a site and have that as a benchmark and a celebratory moment for the community to see that we're doing stuff.
Does everything then turn you on Lakeview's end of the deal to go to get the grants and everything that we need?
The, the two pages that needed to be filled in were filled in by Atkins and at Business Oregon. Larry is saying that contracts will be coming in February, March, but we're complete.
Okay, I, I'm always apprehensive about that, you know, just because I want it to go through. And sometimes there's, there's timelines on grants and stuff like that if we don't pack them.
Agreed. I, I have purposely reserved our ARPA funds to continue with the engineering so we don't have to wait because that would be a long time for the community to wait for a project that they've been waiting for for a long time. So I specifically said we can, you know, we can bridge that gap with the ARPA funds and then pay ourselves back and then you guys can determine what you want to do with those funds. But for now, they're helping to move this project forward. I did let Atkins and Anderson Perry know that that's where we're at. We have $350,000. So that's, until we get our grant money, that's where we're at. So everybody's aware of the expectations.
Are they releasing the funds?
You have, we have to get the contract first. I'm told the funds are there. At Business Oregon, we just need to get the contracts done. And the Treasury finally sent out their documentation, which is a light reading of 560 something pages. So we're going. We're going. And that's, that's it. I do think I would like to schedule another work session with council so we can come up with some additional goals for the ones that are completed. And that way I still have my little...
See, my understanding of that was the Business Oregon had all these funds and people are applying for them right now and people are getting them. They're, they're getting them and if we're not up there on top, we're gonna be down here if it takes till February and March. And the funds might be gone.
The funds are already, the funds have been allocated by the legislature. Business Oregon is the administrator. So you don't lose the funds unless the legislature did something to take them back. Business Oregon is just the portal through the executive branch that funds are coming to the town. So you aren't gonna lose the funds. But remember, Business Oregon has 20 of these projects going on. So if you do miss a timeline, you might go to the bottom of the stack.
That's what I'm thinking.
Because of process. You're not gonna lose the funds. The funds have been allocated. That's an active, that's in the budget, that's been adopted, that's legal, that the law has been passed. So you're not gonna lose the funds. Just remember, you're dealing with a state agency that has workload that's quintupled because of the lot of projects going out.
Well, on my part, I email Larry, he'll screen the other lead. Hi, friend. Where's the paperwork?
Okay, that's what I was...
Yes.
You can also, next time, tell him the council's asking for it.
I will.
Tell him G Department is very concerned.
Say who?
G Department is very concerned, tell him. More than council members.
Okay. I'll tell him tomorrow.
Could be knocking on your door. Okay, that's it? Other thoughts?
Well, I agree with Michelle. We had a good year, it was a short year. It seemed like it was two months long to me that it was, you know, it just rolled that so quick. We did get quite a bit accomplished on the water side. The thing I, I'm the most excited about... We did get quite a bit accomplished on the water side. The thing I am the most excited about probably is the new chlorinator system. Up at the spring line that puts the chlorine into the water we get from the spring. And we no longer have gas chlorine bottles up there. We have dissolved tablets that are completely inert and they're not being dissolved and they're. About as dangerous as a gallon of bleach when they are dissolved, so you know, it's just a super safe, really, and been very accurate. We've got a new flow meter up there so we can track the amount of water we're getting out of the spring a lot more accurately. And the chlorator has been rock solid, been in about two months now and it's functioning perfectly. It was.
Is the water coming back up there?
It it's holding its own for right now.
Oh, no, what's this?
About, yeah, sixty thousand gallons a day right now. Seems like a lot before it turned back down some minute. But that's all in and working great and they were concerned that it may not work down to this low level. Sixty, fifty, sixty gallons a minute. They were afraid that it would not be accurate adding chlorine that's functioning perfectly, so. That was the only concern they had. It'll be great all the way up, you know, we get eight hundred gallons a minute out of it, it'll still still be just right. We're still having problems with well number eight. It's, we're gonna have to get a well grower in here probably. Not sure how our budget's gonna hold up, but we need to wait till July to get somebody over here to do that probably. We can look at, we can see what with that, but. I'm pretty excited about what Michelle and Scott have got done on the water treatment plant and the auto weed readers. I'm really anxious to get those in place. Hopefully we can find grant money for a lot of that too. We had a few less water leaks this year than we had last year. We still had plenty, but we had had a noticeably less than we had the year before. So it gives us a little more time to work on our goods and stuff. We flushed all the tanks and cleaned them out twice. This was the cycle that we cleaned the gold ore tank. We hired divers to come over from Bedford. They went in there and vacuumed it out like a swimming pool. That gets done every five years, so it's done for the next five years. On the sewer side, the wells, back to water, the wells held up remarkably well for being in such a drought. Not sure why they held up so well, but they actually pumped from a higher level than they did the previous year. So that that's surprising to me, but on the sewer side, we had the shortest irrigation season we've had in twenty five years. On the school ag farm. So, I mean, we didn't even make it a total of fifty nine days. We didn't make two months for the irrigation season. And of that, you know, we only irrigated five days a week, so we probably had, you know, thirty nine or forty total irrigation days. We still got a decent hay crop out of it and I wanna continue trying to work out a more desirable. Situation between us and the school because the way it is right now, we move the sprinklers, we. Fertilize the fields, we pay the hay contractor to cut and veil the hay and the school gets the money for the hay. So what we get out of the deal is we get a place to put our sewer effluent and we have to have someplace to go with it, but. I I just don't, I don't think the expense is a reasonable amount to pay. We spend at least twenty five thousand dollars a year. For them to make, you know, fifteen thousand dollars on hay.
How big's the ag farm?
Fifty nine acres.
How much would that cost to buy?
I don't know if they would sell it.
Who owns it?
No, the the school owns it.
Do they do in their ag classes?
Yeah.
It was donated, it was donated to the school. We looked into that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't I don't know if they'd be interested in selling it, but I would definitely be interested in having either somebody contract to take over the whole thing. And move the sprinklers and then they are responsible for getting the hay and they get the hay that they have off of it. I would be ahead of the game to pay them whatever amount they're making. During the year and then just turn the whole thing over to a contractor and that's kind of what Scott and I spoke with. With Quinn at the school and Mr. Carter on. And he would like to see it be taken back over by the ag program and have Atkins.
Well, yeah, that's a ten, that's a ten of the whole thing.
But I mean, we we definitely need to move forward with something that's that's less expensive, less time consuming for my crew.
What about somebody bringing properties? I know there's a guy out there that flood your eats his fields. Is that something that we can use that?
We can't flood irrigate with our water. It can't fund it anytime. It's gotta be sprinkled. The most efficient way to use our water would be a pivot. And it's not a bad piece of property for a pivot. In fact, our school put a pivot on the other side of the creek. And I know if they put in for it, they would probably get a grant to put a pivot in there.
For what it costs us to make hours and maybe worth us.
Yeah, I I think a pivot system is about thirty thousand dollars.
It's double that.
Really, for even for a sixty acre?
Yeah, I don't know, like sixty.
Yeah, probably in four hours. Probably have a lot of money anyway.
We can have a lot better chance with grants if old endies go in and apply for it. Because that's that's two doing groups.
Would we have the water supply for that?
That's the effluent.
Yeah, yeah, though, I mean, we we have. When the water runs out, the water's out, you know, I mean, they're guaranteeing any amount of water.
Yeah.
I mean, we you store enough water, we put out, you know, five hundred gallons a minute and a short pivot like that would run on five hundred gallons a million. So, I mean, they even have low pressure.
Yeah, they just go.
Shannon, isn't there a formula out there that, there's a formula they broke for farmers about when you should put a pivot versus wheel lines correct as far as what yields you can get or else?
Yeah, I'm sure that he talked to our folks.
Yeah, I think if you guys talked to the extension, that might be, you guys talked to the extension service because that's, they do that kind of analysis.
A M C S or something.
Exactly. And then that could be used as your basis for your grant show and how much money we save in whole days and then still keep going with the doing.
Anyway, that would be very desirable to my department to get that thing out of our hands, you know, and it does. It's not without value, you know, getting rid of the water is worth something to us, but I just don't know. You know, a neighboring property would probably take the front, all the water, guarantee they would use all the water, had used it properly. It wouldn't cost us anything. I mean, just pipe it over there and say, there is water. So I think we have quite a bit of bargaining power.
We need to put that on our agenda down the line.
Well, they, to the west up until the.
Right, on the same side of the road, one just the west of it, so, yeah. So anyway, that's that's something that definitely needs to happen and I would like what happened this year if possible. Streetwise, we added several four-way soft intersections. It seems to be a big hit. You know, it really worked well.
I really liked it.
And it and it's not bad on North Second. People aren't too upset about it and it really slowed people down. I think it's a safer place for trucks for kids going home now.
I even ran the stop sign.
Easy to do.
There've been a lot of people.
They only added a lot of twenty mile an hour signs around the schools and and redid some of the twenty five mile an hour signs up a little farther. We have a situation with Roberta Avenue. It needs to be resurfaced and it's got some pretty bad damage to it from when they put the sewer lanes in across there. We put in for a small city allotment fund. We didn't get it. It was very competitive this year. In fact, it was like. Fifty times more applicants than they've ever had for it. Really, it used to be something we got every other year, no matter what, and we just figured out a project for it. But they bumped it up from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, so a lot of bigger cities are are interested in it now. We put in for it again this year. Soon as we're eligible, we put in, but if we don't get it, we're gonna probably have to look at. Finding some money to to chip steel out at least and go in and repair those those crossings. It's pretty rough out there. We have a situation similar with Missouri Avenue out there. The sawmill just beats that road to death. And I don't know what the answer is on that one because it's it's gonna get torn back up and it's.
It's a connected gravel.
Yeah, it's pretty rough right now.
They're running all this heavy, the heavy equipment out.
Yeah, huge loaders, loaded logs and it's just. That's, those two roads are gonna need to be looked at. The other stuff, you know, we have a crack sealing machine. We can seal the cracks and. And do spot repairs in town, but those two are are major concerns. Geothermal, the varying system has been working very well, eating the schools and the hospital. We had a problem with that about four years ago. The reinjection well got plugged up and we had to get somebody down here to clean it out. And it had been running about four years at the time, so I think we're probably gonna need to get a camera in that thing and look at it. Make sure we don't have an issue in the middle of the winter next year with that, so. If it, you can get somebody to bring a camera over, put it down and make sure we're not starting to plug back up if it is and we can schedule to get that thing shocked again. The T O C geothermal is still operating in a diminished capacity. It has a plugged up filter system. And availability of parts was a real hindrance there. Scott got involved with it and we've got a new system designed and ordered. It's been ordered for two months now. And he thinks that's gonna ship the fifteenth of this month. So as soon as we get our hands on that, we're gonna have Paulie Fleming come over and do the major fitment of that new filter system. And so then we'll have them back up and running to full capacity and they'll be very excited about that because they're. They're having to supplement their heat with boiler right now, propane fire boiler. We've had some turnover of personnel at Public Works. I have three people with less than six months on, so that's half the crew including myself. The six of us, three of us are less than six months. And they're doing great, but we just have a lot to learn. We have a lot of education that they need to get to be certified to operate the water and sewer system. And so we're doing a lot of educating. But the three people I have onboard are all performing well. But it's just, it's you can't replace, you know, we we lost three people between the three of that forty years of experience, so. It's kind of starting over. They're they're all three picking it up quickly, but there's just, there's a lot to learn. It's not like, you know, future somebody out of a run ranch, it's. Stuff every direction.
I wanted to, I I was talking to Scott Lamb about the ag farm. The property was given to the school by the Utes. If the school no longer uses it, it has to be returned to the Utes. It uses it to pump water from the lagoons onto the field so we don't have to dump into the creek. Uh, he is supposed, Scott's supposed to meet with the school again this month, Father. Thank you. You're welcome.
You can give it back, huh?
We can give it back and we will just.
Give it back up at the creek.
We'll give it to someone else.
Yeah, and I forgot to tell you. Um, this morning Scott Ute was speaking into the emergency room. He had a pain, pain going down his left arm. We were afraid that he was suffering a heart attack, but he's home now and it is looking like he has a very severe ulcer. So he'll be out of work for the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
That was all I had. Got some other questions.
I'm sorry, I had this comment.
I just have one thing. I've had several people ask me about this alleyway, like.
I dug into it a little bit with the water dealer, right, and it's so frozen solid that I was afraid it would damage the bricks to dig it out of there. Guess I can bring a backhoe down there and break it up.
That's what I'm asking. Several people.
What do they want to go in there for?
There's people that live back there.
There's people that live back there. There's also like stov oil, I guess, that somebody over there was watching stoves trying to fill a tank and that's what they told me.
We usually get that dug out of there before it freezes and then we had all the Christmas lights are stuck in it now.
Stoves was filling my tank and had no problems, so.
Well, no, they got it in. I'm just saying what this guy told me. I mean, I got people stopping me on the street for a lot of different things.
We'll get it dug out of there.
Okay, perfect. That that'll check one thing off. That's all I have for this. I've got some more.
My name's one of the finance.
Finance does not have a report ready for you. I apologize.
Okay.
Um, the day I was supposed to come back from Christmas, I had a major asthma incident. I need to pull two weeks, so we will have a full report at the end of summer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fire nine one one is not here. Um, they got your your court, their report's in your packet. Oh. Move on to old business, resolve business. You guys, have you worked that thing? You still working on?
I'm still working on it. They, we came to where we wanted everything changed. I just need to do it.
Well, not that you haven't had anything to do.
I don't. I just sit at my desk and I look at the computer. All day.
A lot of people just do that.
I want you guys to know.
That's right.
She was down here working Saturday.
Busted.
Well, I used to work at school a lot.
Well, she came in and worked on Saturday.
Well, it's quiet and we have some rats too.
She's not only working five days, sometimes she down here six days. All right, let's go to the new business. The ratification agreement between Public Works and Town Hall. I went over that and I felt that it was a good contract.
Are we paying them enough to have to keep them there, anything?
The money wasn't the issue. It was the people we did lose. It was it was working conditions. They didn't wanna work weekend duties the one guy I lost, so we're competitive, yeah. That is a good contract.
Okay, water re-increase.
Does it need to be approved to council? Is that, I don't know how to.
Oh, we already did that.
Well, that's all we did. So we've already approved.
Well, I think a lot of it was just to let them know we're getting, we're increasing them again. That's what it is.
Well, we we approved the increase.
Well, we can let people know that already, so.
Yeah, but. It is going into effect, I assume.
We did, we approved that increase last week.
We did, but we still have to keep you guys updated. We still have to just.
This is my first one, so I just wanna make sure I've got the blessing of everybody so that I can get them paid because they've been waiting for a while.
Because I think we got noticed with our water bills.
Yeah.
I think a lot of that happens, yeah.
I'm fine.
Oh, the, I mean, for the ratification of the the union contract, you guys have to agree, like, do we, everybody's agreed?
They need a motion on that.
They need a motion.
Okay.
Just a motion and and.
Just a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt the agreement from Public Works in Town Hall.
A second.
Motion made in second, on favor.
Aye.
Okay, I'll sign it.
Thank you.
Okay, Atkins and Anderson Perry were awarded the water treatment plant and are ready to start engineering contract. Michelle's already went over that. Plowing removal vehicles parked on the street sidewalks, rain clear, snow and ice. Are you still having problems with vehicles, unattended vehicles and stuff?
Well. The ones that are there are there for the winter now. I mean, they're, you can't see them, so I don't know.
We're just getting lots of calls and complaints and it has nothing to do with you.
Yeah.
It's just neighbors are calling complaining because when the plows are coming by, not only is it following in so and so's vehicle, but it plows in their driveway. Because they're parked too close to it. Yeah, it was an ongoing few weeks of nightmare phone calls.
Yeah.
So just informational.
But they are false on streets, much worse than others, I have noticed.
They they, we go over this every year.
We have an ordinance, but we.
We we just don't have an ordinance enforcement possibility, I mean.
Right.
The Sheriff's Department worked with us a little bit on vehicles and a little bit. The sheriff's department worked with us a little bit on vehicles and a little bit with trailers, but it was kinda hitting bad.
I noticed that some did get.
I turned in several trailers that never got.
So you're not talking about just like parking in front of your house? Because like I park in front of my house and I see that you gotta move it at ten o'clock at night. I don't know where to move it to. Round the corner.
My, my problem is, is there's horse trailers still on the streets. Linda Lane, one of the narrowest streets in town, has a horse trailer and two utility trailers on it. And I spoke with Daniel Tagg the other day and said, I really need those moved. And he says, well, I can go talk to them. I said, well, there is, you can give them a ticket, you know, we have an ordinance. And nothing ever happened with that, but I know he had a lot going on too, but. You know, I spoke to one gentleman and, and told him, you really need to get his horse trailer out there. And he said, why not? I'm gonna go tell the cop come and tell me tomorrow. He works at the jail. He's a jailer.
Okay. Um, air quality trailers to be moved. Did you picture where they're moving it to? Air quality?
Well, I'm not sure yet. Yeah, they have to decide, but it, it's not doing the right.
They can't help it.
Doing. It's not working.
Why don't this rule allow it's subject to the superhand?
Because they have a bunch of trailers around.
Trailers and a big giant fat fence.
Is their picture in there?
Yeah, I, yeah, I did see the picture, but, um-
It's almost like they're building a trailer park.
Well, I mean, here's the thing, when you don't have airflow through there, all that smoke stagnates in behind that fence. So it has nowhere to go. So then our colors go from green to yellow to red, like within fifteen, twenty minutes. And it doesn't help when the diesel rigs are parked there and they're rubbing up their engines and blowing that coal right into the trailer.
Well, that, that looks like a trailer park down there.
Yeah, I have too.
How high is that thing off the ground?
Um.
Maybe eight feet?
I don't know. The whole system runs on the outside of it, like right midstream. So you've got a meter that's, I think, down lower, one on top, and then you've got your tower to get the read. So it's just behind the fence.
It's, it's on, uh, center and-
Yeah.
Down the north side.
It's, it's just, the tower is just to get our frequencies and everything. That's not the smoke thing. The smoke thing is down further, about midstream of the trailer.
How close is that to the town?
Um, that was my question.
Kind of the inner city. Inner city limits.
Has to be somewhat in the vicinity. I tried to get it to move out to the baseball fields.
Yeah, that's why.
Cause there's amazing airflow out there and we never have a red day, but they didn't like that idea.
Well, that's in the town limits, isn't it?
Right?
It's in the town limits, but it's not gonna help air quality if we aren't getting it accurate.
I tried.
Down by the, down by the baseball fields is gonna do airflow.
I said the same thing. Michelle even tried to back me up. It just didn't work, so.
Uh, the T S plan, T S-
Well, no, we, we owe that Ser Otmus Park. What about that?
Well, thank you.
Sandy lives down there. She goes walking down there.
It's, it's, it's small, you know, it's, it only takes up half the size of the-
It just looks bad on that picture because of that fence and all that crap around it.
Well, it really is bad. It can't be covered.
Yeah. Is it gonna contract?
Vandalism to your problem.
Yeah, they, they get a, it needs a high fence around it.
They're not the right.
The air qual, D E Q pays them a monthly rental. It's a park. It's not- To have it there.
That's a ball field. Seems like it'd be a good spot to put a chain of fence around it to keep the airflow.
And then you keep people off of anything.
It has one that would be a six-foot chain link fence around it now, doesn't it?
Yeah. All right.
All right. Uh, the T S P plan referred to by the town of Lakeview planning commission.
So, that is, um, that was a little bit of a chore to do because it's five hundred and forty-one pages long. So I did not print it out. I did not email it to anybody. I got it sent to Sheila, so when she gets back, it's gonna be put on to the website for everybody to see. Um, we do have one printed hard copy here, so, um, it's in Michelle's office.
Cause I'm using it to talk to ODOT to get us money. So, well, I don't think we all need copies of it because we're not going to read it like a novel anyway. But, um, really, if anybody wants information, we know where we can get it.
I think I have ninety percent of it printed too, as it came along in chunk.
I don't know, but I never, I'm not being together again. Just kidding.
Okay. Zach, then we'll move on down to the pro- proclamation.
Can I say one thing before you go? I went to the planning board last night.
Yeah.
And, uh, just wanted to make a quick report. They said okay on the, uh, your children's project. They okayed that, so.
Which one is that?
Trailer park thing.
Oh, okay.
That you know, it's, it's all okay. It's gonna go in. So, I just wanted to make my report. That was the only thing they talked about.
They can put what, six trailers in there?
Six, yes, sir.
Yeah.
You're so proud of them. Good job. So great.
Okay, you, yeah, before I read this? Okay, what I thought. This proclamation, whereas children in Lakeview should have access to the highest quality education possible and whereas Lakeview recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Lakeview to be successful adults and whereas quality education is critically important to economic vitality. Yeah, of Lakeview and whereas Lakeview is home of a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversity our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community and whereas Lakeview has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children and whereas school choice week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Whereas now, therefore, I Ray Turner do hereby recognize January twenty-third through twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two as Lakeview School Choice Week and I call this offer observation through the attention of all of our citizens. The date is eleventh of January, two thousand twenty-two, and I'll sign this.
Hold on a fifth, one, two, three, four, five, on the fifth, whereas.
Yeah.
It says educational variety not only helps to diversity, diversify our economy. Is that what? I think that's what that's supposed to be, or you could say helps in the diversity of our economy.
I'm fixing.
Pardon me?
I'm fixing.
Well, no, just before, you know, just so you know it's in there.
I'll hold off then.
Well, I, I mean, you can sign it.
No, you can still sign it with that change.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's an easy mistake to make when you're tied to that.
Or it's just an easy dog mistake.
It's a word, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Are you sure, Jay?
Yep, I'm sure.
Okay, then we will adjourn the meeting at, uh, six oh eight.